I now call the Eastland Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of September 19th, 2024, to order at 7:30 PM. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Peck, you're here?
Yep.
Ms. Markovitz?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Here.
I believe Ms. Harris is not here, so it's Mr. Liska's turn to seat, if you don't mind. Thank you. Also, we have Mr. Maholland, our zoning official. Ms. LaRocque, and also Ms. Hardy, are you here tonight? Yes. Great.
I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll open with the regular meeting. We have the application of Susan Lehman, member of Lucky Nine LLC, owner for Coastal Area Management CAM Review for proposed repairs to an existing stone shoreline for property located at 219 Old Black Point Road, Assessor Map 02.1, Lot 9. We do have a memo from Mr. Maholland to read.
There you go. Okay. Memo 2, Eastline Zoning Commission, from William Maholland, zoning official, re-Coastal Area Management Review, 219 Black Point Road, Niantic, date September 18th, 2024. As the Commission is aware, coastal site plan reviews are a state mandated program authorized in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This statute delegates legal authority to zoning commissions to adopt regulations and regulate activities not otherwise exempted occurring above the CJL or coastal jurisdiction line as identified by the Connecticut DEEP and within the defined coastal boundary of their respective communities to protect coastal resources and ensure compliance with the CAM Act's coastal goals and policies. The Board is charged with the review of the coastal site plans and may approve, modify, or deny activities proposed after evaluating the specific site and considering the potential effects, both beneficial and adverse, of the activities on the coastal resources and their consistency with the applicable state coastal goals and policies. In acting on a coastal site plan, the Commission must state its findings and reasons for the decision. To approve, the Board must find that the proposed activity is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and standards, and whether or not any potential adverse effects of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water development are acceptable. In this application, Lucky Nine LLC is seeking a CAM approval to repair an existing stone shoreline erosion control structure which has suffered minor deterioration over the number of years. The degradation of the structure is essentially from the natural and constant assault of the forces of nature. This project is viewed as a housekeeping matter to repair and manage the existing armored shoreline. The Connecticut DEEP and New England Army Corps of Engineers has already issued permits for the project under their jurisdictions. The applicant will give a brief demonstration and will document how the proposed repairs comply with the CAM cacteria. I note that our DEEP CAM contract has expired and has been replaced by Karen Michaels. Ms. Michaels has provided a coastal site plan review comment checklist, which is in the Commissioner's packet. In conclusion, the Board should consider the characteristics of the site, including location, condition of onsite resources, if any. The Commission must find in an approval that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the Act, and that all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent activities.
Thank you. In your packet, we're not reading this into the minutes, but for your reading pleasure, if you want to look inside, it basically tells us that DEEP has granted permits and also the Army Corps of Engineers has approved this. So if our presenter would like to go ahead?
Sure. Name is David Preventure, project architect with Shore Design, address is 8 Potter Hill Drive, Guilford, Connecticut.
Thank you.
And I'm here representing the owner tonight. So the proposal, as was well summarized, is simply to repair an existing stone shoreline that spans the entire waterfront here. And just some detailed photos, you can sort of see, when this property was originally developed, it appears as though boulders were just thrown over the side in a very unorganized manner. So a lot of the stones have grown out, dislodged, and then there's some invasive species that have taken over. So essentially, we're looking to stay in the existing footprint and then rebuild it to the same profile. So essentially, the function is not going to change. This is a very nice proactive sort of measure that the owner is undertaking so that erosion doesn't start to fur. So it's sort of very reasonable. They'll be methodically deconstructing the slope and then rebuilding it, removing any junk stone, and then replacing that with appropriate stone. And that's really straightforward.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
Is it just stone that's on the site that's being used, or they bringing some in?
Probably some, yeah, some new stone. Correct. I think we're estimating about 47 cubic yards, 10% of what's there.
Has there already been a contractor chosen?
Yes. Yes.
And of course, do you interact with DEEP and Army Corps, and you obtain those permits?
We have. We have.
How long, when will this start and how long will it take?
They were hoping to start probably earlier than now.
Yes.
Yeah. So I was in touch with the contractor, I think this morning, just to check on the progress. So I'm sure next month, if all goes well with the appeal period.
Any other questions?
No concrete, just the weight of the stone for correct.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so they plan to interlock the stones, whereas right now, they're not interlocked, they're just sort of haphazardly lying there. So once they can interlock them, but still maintain the regular surface, just to break up the wave energy, that's the idea.
I think it's pretty cut and dry. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Susan Lehman of Lucky Nine LLC, owner for Coastal Area Management Review for proposed repairs to an existing stone shoreline for property located at 219 Old Black Point Road, Niantic, Assessor's Map 002.1, Lot 9. Reasons, number one, the application is consistent with all the applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act. Reason number two, applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impact of the proposed activity on both the coastal resources and the future water-dependent uses.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It passed 600? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, if everyone has read the minutes from last week, do we have an approval for that?
So we moved the minutes, so whatever the date was.
9, let's see, 9/5/2024. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5/01. Thank you. Old Business, we actually have a confirmed date that Attorney Blistdale is coming. It's on his calendar for our October 17th meeting, so hopefully everyone can be here for that meeting.
And we have it in writing.
Yes, we got it in writing, and we've been waiting a year for this, so.
The date again?
October 17th meeting, so hopefully you all can come. The Subcommittee for a Text Amendment on Misuse in the CA Zone, I understand the first draft was completed, however, there's more work to be done on it, so.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time on it this week and found that it needs a little bit more work, so it should be ready for the 17th.
Under New Business, we have the application of J. Robert Fannen Associates, PC, for Coastal Area Management CAM Review for demolition of existing home and construction of new single-family home with detached accessory structure for property located at 112 Shore Drive, Black Point Beach Club, Assessor Map 02.7, Lot 17. Is there any business tonight that any Commission members would like to bring up? No? Okay, it's time for public delegation, and we have someone here tonight that would like to speak, so come on up.
Ms. McCallum. Lisa McGowan, 33 Spinnaker, I'd like to thank the Board here for just checking on that stop sign at that new development up in North Bridebrook Road. I go that way all the time.
I'm not sure they know what happened, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, I didn't get to speak last week. I got here too late.
If I may, Mrs. McGowan.
It's Lisa McGowan. It's Lisa McGowan, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. File the verbal complaint with me about posagilius of Bridebrook Development, they had not put the stop sign up entering onto the Bridebrook Road, and so I looked into it and he put it up like two days later.
Thank you.
It's an internal sign, but it still, it needs to be up, so it is up.
Good, thank you.
So thank you for trimming the bushes, but I did want to add that I went by on Sunday, and right when you come down that hill, there was, there's a huge pile of dirt, and the kids were playing there, and that soccer ball's going to go right down the hill. Is there any possibility of putting like one of those orange snow fences up? It's almost like an attractive nuisance there.
Well, it may or may not be. I'd have to look into it, and if it's on private property and the kids are playing.
I know, I don't mean, I'm not telling, saying the kids shouldn't play.
It's not a zoning violation, but I, let me talk to them, take a ride out, take a look.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maholland, what do you have first tonight?
We're busy.
Oh, we have, oh, so sorry. Come on up.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask again, I would have raised my hand before. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Paul Fermica, 11 South Lee Road in Niantic. I own and operate a couple of restaurants here in town, and I want to thank you for your service. Had the opportunity to sit in that seat from 1991 to 1999 and chair this Commission for a couple of years there, so I remember with fondness that opportunity I had. I also served as the First Selectman from 2007 to 2015, when I worked closely with the professional staff here in the community and the building to rebuild Main Street, not rebuild, to renovate Main Street. New sidewalks, streetlights, granite curbs, Mr. Maholland was integral in the success of that Main Street rehabilitation, and as we know, his fingerprints are all over positive community projects that, you know, populated this town, so it's been a pleasure working with him. I apologize for my delay of coming in here to Mr. Maholland, but I want to talk about I have a canopy at 374 Main Street. I am under an order from Mr. Maholland to remove that, which I intend to comply with. I've removed one and replaced it with an umbrella, almost exactly the same size as the canopy, which is legal, because it has one pole, not four, but it provides almost the same amount of shade. The structure definition that we have in our zoning regulations, I believe the legislative intent was not to really go after these types of opportunity. And if I may, Madam Chair, approach the Commission, I did bring a few pictures, in case you haven't seen downtown, you might want to take a look. Is that right?
Yeah, thank you.
You note on the right of the picture is the canopy with the umbrella, it's almost the same size as this umbrella to the left, all the way over. This is a close-up picture of the umbrella, which is legal. This is another one of the two umbrellas there. And then this is given indication of the height of the canopy with the small umbrella that is there with almost the same thickness. And there's a number of other pictures that you can look at, but of note, this is a picture of one of the legs that I brought tonight to show you. It's not attached to anything, it's not, it's not able to be, have anything attached to, such as 2x4s or any of that other stuff. And you can see it's very light. It's actually lighter, I think, than the umbrella pole. There's four of these, they just sit there, canopy's attached, the shade moves back and So the definition of structure, in the definitions, it's on page 17, number 1.73, it says, "Structure: Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on, under, or above ground or attachment to something having location on the ground." Now that certainly applies to this, but it also applies to umbrellas, it applies to tables, it applies to fire pits, outdoor heaters, any of those things, if you read, require location on, under, or above ground or attachment to something having location on the ground, none of which are attached. So I think this is more an accessory use than a structure. And I would, wanted to bring that to the attention of the Committee, or Commission, so that you might have a look at it, because I think we've done a great job in upgrading our community, especially our downtown. We're starting to see all kinds of businesses relocate, even from Mystic coming down, leaving the, you know, the well-known, it's probably the most popular moniker in the Northeast is Mystic. Everybody knows where it is, and yet they're moving to Niantic because of what we offer here. So I think if we're going to upgrade our downtown, I think we should upgrade our businesses, our restaurants, our shops, our merchants, our services, to accommodate with that. And I think that these things provide an opportunity to just make it a little different than umbrellas. You know, there's a lot of umbrellas on Main Street. There's a number of restaurants who share my view, who've had conversations with Mr. Maholland with regard to putting a cover over, or pergola with a cover over, that would look a little better in our minds than just a couple of umbrellas. So I know that we have, I know that we have the Yale Charrette coming, I was part of that 25, 26 years ago, I think, this is Hardy. They've made some great ideas to upgrade the community, they've put another program together to continue to upgrade, if the town chooses to follow their advice. And so I think this simple fix by classifying these things to accessory uses, I think would be a good opportunity to upgrade our position. You can tell this is hollow aluminum, we can't, you know, in speaking with the great staff downstairs in the zoning office, their concern, as they related to me with this structure, with this structure regulation, was that people could put these down, and then while nobody's looking, they build a room and they enclose it in, and they become a non-conforming, but it's there and people use it. And I think, but this is clearly not something that can be, not simply that can be done with that, and given that those of us with special permits to operate restaurants on these things have to renew every year, so if we tried to pull something like that, it would simply be denied, and, you know, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. So I know that there are other opportunities and ways for us to go, text amendments and special permit modifications and all of that, but I think that is a bit far afield of something that we really need. I think, and I've been in the Legislature and the town government for many years, and I believe in simplified regulations and ordinances. And I think just accessory use and understanding for that with the Commission's approval, I think would go a long way for a number of restaurants to upgrade, and would allow us to keep our canopy up there, which I think looks a heck of a lot better than the umbrellas. So thank you for the opportunity to.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why did you take one down and not the other?
Because I thought the opportunity might be for tomorrow if the Commission wanted to drive by and see the difference.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm sure we'll have time before the next season to discuss this, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and for your service.
Where's your pitcher? Where's your pitcher?
Oh, they moved.
They put the latest guy in there. That's the hot seat, right on the chimney.
Mr. Maholland, what do you have for us tonight?
The Trachis Project may be, may, it's not progressing. We're not sure what's going on, but I've heard from their attorney, who's no longer involved, and I don't think their engineering crew is involved, so I'm not sure what the formal status is. Right now, that seems to be stalled, so that's an update for you. Our court case, and I want to be careful what I say, on Boston Post Road, may be resolved in a different manner and may go away, but we'll wait and see. The 138 project on Boston Post, you know, is done, and it actually looks pretty nice, and some people have already started to move in. Lot of inquiries about activities for downtown, and I'm getting a lot of people from out of state because we've been discovered, so they're looking for business opportunities. Rumor was that the Morton House had sold. I did not check to see if the sale was consummated, don't know yet, they have not come back to see me. So I'm talking to several different groups, and as you know, I may talk to 20 people and one might come back. So, you know, no point in getting too excited until somebody actually walks through the door. But we're very steady and we're busy. Thank you.
Thank you. I did attend the planning special meeting last week, there was basically just one item on their agenda. It came at the end of a seven, I believe it was seven-year litigation. The neighbors are trying to stop the Twin Valley Lake subdivision from going forward, and it was ruled that they can develop it, so the developers asked for a 90-day extension to file their plot plans for the neighborhood, and that was passed, so that was the only thing at the planning meeting. And if you don't know where that is, it's kind of near Springbok Road and Green Valley Lakes Road. I believe the next planning meeting is October 8th, and Ms. Yehoss, will you be attending? Thank you. Just the only thing I have tonight, if you didn't check your email or didn't go to the FOIA presentation, Jessica did send you the slides, so you can go through that in case you couldn't make the meeting. I think that's about it. If, oh, Ms. Hardy, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, I do. I don't want you to get used to getting out too early. It could become a habit, just because Mr. LeDucer is here.
So I think it's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to try to, as we have these ex-officios, to try to keep Commissions apprised of all of the things that are going on in town to the best of our abilities. So let me start with the Board of Education. They heard a two-hour-plus briefing on the future of artificial intelligence, what it means not only for the education system, which was the primary focus of that, but there is an individual who goes around the state, he's a state representative, to explain to communities what the implications are for this and what we're going to be required to do. So I asked if this, when he finished his presentation, I asked, are there implications for our local boards and commissions for this? And the response was, oh, yes, it's coming. So we have a recent resignation on the Commission on Aging. Marge Cast, who served on that board for many years, has retired, and we have a vacancy there, if you know of anyone who's interested. The Board of Finance, at budget time, made the decision to cut our nonprofits by 44% across the board, and that was pretty dramatic, as no one knew in advance that this was going to happen, so they didn't have public showing up to plead for their cause. So the Board of Selectmen has heard from the Historic Cemetery Commission, the Commission, the Historical Society Commission, environmental groups expressing their concerns, the Scholarship Association was also cut, so this is just a straight 44% cut. And for many of these boards, commissions, it's volunteers. They have a budget from the town of $2,500. Many of these groups, particularly the Historical Cemetery Commission, they maintain 16 communities and 16 cemeteries in this town with volunteers. So I think we're getting, we're hearing a lot, but this really is not, I mean, we were left with having to make the decision. The Board of Finance was the one that made the cuts, and I believe that they need to receive a strong message from the community, that this is not the kind of community we want. The Fair Rent Commission, which was just created, that falls under state guidelines. We had more applicants that wanted to serve than there were spaces that were available, and this was very tricky, because under the state guidelines, there are certain positions that have to be filled. So this is something that's new for the town, but concerning what's happening with many of our developments that purport to be affordable, or somewhat low income, excessive rent increases, and so this was very short notice for us, because we had to act very fast, because if, in the meantime, for our deliberations, people had gotten a notice that their rent or their lease was running out, then we wouldn't be able to help them, because the Commission didn't exist then. So we did hear several complaints last night, that people felt that this was too fast and not enough public input, but in fact, at many of our hearings for discussions of this, we had standing room only. So not everyone was happy, but I feel that as a start, this was a good start to help many of our town residents who have not had a strong voice. So under the requirements, we had to have a landlord, we had to have an attorney, we had to, so the state is very specific on this, and this is our first time having to deal with this. So hopefully, this is going to take off, and they're going to begin their discussions, and hopefully, this will help many of our less-able residents, shall we say. The Commission on Aging also, had, received budget cuts, and for the amount of service that they provide, on an average basis, 94 people go to the service, for services for the Commission on Aging at the community center. And it totals, I misplaced my actual number, but something like, I think, I was astounded, something like 20,000 people a year, 24,000 people a year? I don't want to be quoted on that, but general size of their yearly service to the community. The town also, Board of Selectmen last night, also had created a new, a resurrection of the School Building Committee due to the improvements that are going to be made to the high school roof, the middle school roof, and the aquatic center. Those roofs were leaking, many of them 20 years old, perhaps not the best construction that might have been made, but that's it, that's what we have. And so there will be a new building committee established for that, and so they'll be looking for some membership on that. I think that's it. I hope it was concise enough, but to give you kind of a flavor of what's going on, and as Mr. Fermica indicated, we're a busy town now. A lot of people want to come here, a lot of people want to, want to be part of the town.
Thank you.
A question. On the budget regarding. On the, uh, the budget regarding, uh, nonprofits, um...
Yes.
Does the Board of Selectmen have the ability to override the finance board?
No.
No. Does the Board of Selectmen have the right to dig into some rainy day fund or something to fill in a blank?
That has not been discussed, but I think that, this is my personal opinion, that these were the cuts that were made by the Board of Finance. It's up to them to figure out how they're going to make restitution. We don't have any excess funds, we don't have any secret money that we can delve into. This was their decision. And, uh, in fairness, again, short notice for us, uh, you know, to go through each of these individual, uh, groups and say, well, you're going to get three percent and you're going to get five percent, it was, it was too much. So I think people need to be, need to be visible, need to be speaking out about this and, um, particularly showing up at the Board of Finance. So that's it for tonight, if I can answer any other questions. Okie dokie.
Thank you. Well, I think that about wraps it up. If we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.